Good morning, everyone. I will be calling the May 23, 2024 Planning Commission hearing to order. Time now is 9:00 a.m. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ruby, may we have verification of legal notice, please?
Yes, everything has been properly noticed.
All right. Moving right along, we are just looking for approval for the minutes of the March 28, 2024 Planning Commission hearing.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the minutes for March 28, 2024 Planning Commission hearing.
All in favor?
A second.
Okay. And then our next item would be public input. This is an opportunity for anyone wishing to speak to the Planning Commission on anything that is not on the scheduled agenda. Okay, you're welcome to approach the podium. And be sure to state your first and last name, and I'd love to hear from you. Thanks. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Margot Cambara. On the subject of representation, I would like to request that business before your body that concerns District 5 be tabled until you have a fellow Commissioner representing District 5. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on citizens or, excuse me, public input in the Zoom room, by any chance, Ruby? No hands in the Zoom room?
Chair Price?
Please, Director Turner?
Please.
Good morning.
Good morning. You'll notice that the District 5 seat, as Ms. Cambara just noted, is now vacant. Commissioner Field is moving out of District 5, and so she resigned from her position with the Commission. We did ask and beg and try to coerce her to be here this morning so we could honor her service, but alas, she and her dog had a close encounter with a skunk this morning.
Oh.
So that one actually worked. I was throwing, I was kicking back most of her tries, her attempts at excuses, but that one we could go with.
Yeah.
But I did tell her I was going to talk about her and volunteer her for stuff in her absence. And so I just wanted to express appreciation for what she has brought to this position of service. As you know, Commissioners do not do this for the money. You do it because you care about the community and you want to make Lake County a great place long into the future. And that is what Commissioner Price did. She has been a close friend of mine.
Oh, thanks.
I mean, sorry.
It's okay. You were looking at me.
That lady. See, that's what she gets for not being here. I forget her name. But over the last couple of years since I've returned to Lake County, I have appreciated having discussions with her about items that are coming before the Commission. And we don't always agree, but I always recognized that she brings her intellect, her knowledge and experience in Lake County, and her passions for agriculture to every item that she considers. And that is to be respected. So we do have this totally awesome plaque.
Oh, that's nice.
That the staff designed. It says, "Lake County Planning Commissioner Miley Field, District 5, from 2021 to 2024. Serving with energy and devotion to preserve the future of Lake County."
Yes.
I'll have to give that to her once she doesn't stink so bad at night.
Well, thank you, Director Turner, and yes, thank you, Commissioner, well, I don't know what we call her now, Ms. Field, Mrs. Field, for her contribution to her community. And that does kind of lead me into some unfortunate news. It was brought to my attention by a fellow Commissioner this morning that a previous community member and Commissioner Bob Malley has passed away. And Bob, actually, I got to be on the Commission with him while he was on the board for a little bit with us here. And I believe he served 14 years on the Planning Commission, and he was also very active in other community organizations. So just wanted to put that out there, that we did lose a good one, and he will not be forgotten. So thank you so much for that. Killing a little bit of time here, everybody. We are actually at, we'll go ahead and close public input and move on to our first timed item. Time now is 9:05. Our first item is consideration of proposed general plan conformity, GPC 23-04, to vacate portion of Collier Avenue adjacent to 2685 Lake Shore Boulevard, Neese. Applicant is Diane De Michelle. Location is 2685 Lake Shore Boulevard, Neese, APN 03107109. Good morning, staff.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Max Stockton. I am an Assistant Planner for County of Lake, here to present to you the general plan conformity for the vacation of Collier Avenue, as previously mentioned. Today, we will be going over the applicant's permit request, site description, project analysis, aspects of interest, and our recommendations. In this slide, you will notice a portion of Collier Avenue to the south of Lake Shore Boulevard, adjoining the Clear Lake. And this portion is the portion of request. This slide is to notice that the applicant's property is to the west of Collier Avenue, the portion to be vacated. And it is, you know, relative, in its relation to Highway 20. This image here is to show you that the restaurant on the right had been bar and grill, pardon me, had been, has been used for a long time. And you will notice the red truck, the white vehicle after that, and the other vehicles are in the portion of Collier Avenue we are requesting to vacate. It has been an unmaintained portion of the county's road, Collier Avenue, for quite some time. And although it could be used as an access point to Lake, there is a new park to the east, about a quarter mile down, that has a nice shady area, it has a boat ramp, it is a well-established park. And so we carry on with our recommendation here. Through our analysis of the general plan and its conformity with this vacation, we reviewed Chapter 3 for land use and Chapter 9 for open space conservation and recreation, as well as the zoning ordinance. Chapter 3 specifically of the Lake County general plan calls out the promotion of commercial use, the support of our economy here in Lake County, the revitalization instead of replacement. Okay? So rather than reconstructing or having this business leave and something else come into place, maybe carrying on with its legacy, and the attraction for more visitors to our Chapter 9 is a little bit different here, but still supports the use. It recognizes that the lake is the single most valuable resource of Lake County, and adequate public access is necessary to access that lake. Sometimes it's provided at dead ends, much like this one. The development regulations should not prevent further blockage from the shoreline roadways, and where feasible, it should restore visual contact to the lake from said roadways. The county-owned lakefront, this portion here being a county maintained, or a county unmaintained but recognized public access road, should retain public ownership and improve, be improved as needed to expand opportunities for the general public. But this portion has not been maintained for many years, and there is no vision to maintain it at this time. This image here is to gather an aspect of visualization. We are actually on the portion of Collier Avenue, looking northward down Collier Avenue across Lake Shore Boulevard. On a quiet morning, there was no traffic. You can see that it is not the same as the portion of Collier Avenue in front of us that has striping, it has fresh pavement, and it is, you know, maintained, for lack of a better term. This portion here is the portion that would access the lake. You can see that it is gravelly, there are debris all across the portion, and it has not been used for quite some time. And another view to give you the overall perspective from the lakeside looking towards Collier Avenue.
Is that ramp part of the boathouse drill's property?
Yes. I believe there is someone in the room that could better state this.
Sorry.
Due to, due to the state code, I believe the surveyor could better speak on that, for further clarification, it is recognized that the property owners would own to the half-point of the road on either side of the property, so of either side of the road.
Oh, I ask only because in the report it said something about the owner's intent to upgrade.
Yes, sir.
Access and all of that.
And further carried on in the report, it is mentioned that this is our department's recognition of how this plan conforms with the general plan. It would need to carry on and go forward with the surveyor's division to the Board of Supervisors for final approval, and at which time they would go over all of those details, possibly a lot line adjustment or further. I'm not specific and proficient at that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. So to carry on, the Planning Division would like to recommend the approval of the general plan conformity, GPC 2304, with the findings mentioned in the staff report. And I would like to carry on to any further questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the Commissioners before we open it to the public for comment or questions? Nope. Okay, I think this is pretty straightforward. I think anybody who's been to that area or to the boathouse would automatically assume that it's part of the parking lot-ish, minus the lack of parking lines, and we'll just leave it at that. I'll go ahead and open it for public comment. If anyone in the room has any comments or concerns regarding this agenda item, you're welcome to approach the podium.
I just have one question. What do you mean by vacate?
Be sure to state your first and last name, just for the record. You're okay.
Jim Maiulow.
Okay, you're welcome to answer.
Yes, so vacating would be vacating the county's responsibility for that portion of the road.
Okay, and then it turns over to the property owners?
Yes, that would be appropriate.
Great.
And then at that time, if they wanted to turn it into a boat launch or whatever they wanted to do, it would have to come, go through the regular processes at that time?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. Any other public input at this time? Anybody, and you're welcome to approach the podium if you'd like to speak. Please be sure to state your first and last name. You'll have three minutes.
De Michelle.
I'm sorry, one more time?
Diane De Michelle.
Oh, good morning.
Hi. I just wanted you to know that I would.
Try to speak a little bit more into the microphone.
I've been taking care of it for many, many years, and I would like to fix the parking lot up, but I would really love to put more docks and have more boating. And I can't put it on the left side because the county, it goes into the water. And that's the main reason. I would put more piling stocks, I would fix the ramp, and I would put lines for the park. And just, that's basically it, just to get it.
That's, I appreciate your, you kind of shedding a little bit more light on that, on what the, what the future vision would be, because.
It would look much better.
Excellent, yeah.
The beach, anybody can access it.
Mm-hmm.
And I would fix it so that people could put their kayaks in or their jet skis right there.
Mm-hmm.
And then if I, I know it angles, but if I could put pilings close to the docks I just put in, I could have boats that are circling out there all the time, maybe find parking places.
Yes.
It would be a big benefit to, for the people to use the lake and for me, for getting people to be able to come in. So that's about it.
Excellent. Well, thank you again for, for your comment. And I know that you had mentioned, I believe it's Keeling Park down on Lake Shore.
Yes, ma'am.
That has a public launching facility, which is nice to have right there in your backyard as well.
Right, you can walk them.
Mm-hmm. Excellent.
Yes.
Okay. Do you have anything else to say, or does that kind of complete it?
No, that's it. I just, you know, wanted to clear it up about the water part and the beach, and I would put parking lines in.
Sure.
So.
Excellent.
And I do pave that area. I do keep that paved, so.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further comments? Any hands in the Zoom room, Ruby? All right. That being said, I will go ahead and close public comment, and there are only being three Commissioners present today. We do have to have a unanimous decision.
I don't know if you can hear me, but we can't hear anything that's happening there, and I'm on hold trying to talk.
I'm glad that you had.
Community Development.
Okay. I'm glad that you had mentioned out there in the Zoom room. We can hear you. Can you state your first and last name, please?
First came on just as you got on the phone.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Oh, that's, that's great. Okay, I can, thank you so much for your help, sir. Bye.
Is she talking to me?
No.
Okay, actually, I was talking to a tech guy on the phone just now. We weren't able to hear anything that happened up until this point, and the minute he got on the phone, everything came online with the sound.
Okay.
We've been on Zoom going, we can't hear, we can't hear. And so I called the Community Development, and your tech guy just worked some miracle, and now we hear you.
Excellent. I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for reaching out.
All right. Thanks for re-zoom. Go ahead.
All right.
Bye.
Thank you. Okay, so public comments closed. We're at discussion with the Commission for Motion. I was letting the public in the Zoom land know that there's only three Commissioners present, and most, and all of our decisions have to be unanimous. So that's where we are at.
And if there is not unanimity, then the project is automatically denied.
Automatically denied, correct. So that's where we're at.
I just have some comments about this road vacation. I mean, it's a great thing. I think it's gonna, obviously, the applicant has been taking care of this, this road, as she stated, she's paved it before, and I think it's a big deal to have a restaurant on the lake. And the issue is that a lot of places don't have adequate, like, docks to be able to accommodate their customers. And we do get a lot of fishing tournaments that come up here, and, you know, they, they'll just go to the next place or, you know, park down at the launch or something like that. But I think definitely, I think we're hitting, you know, two birds with one stone by doing this, because, I mean, if the county hasn't really been doing much or with this portion of the road, and the applicant has been, or is willing to take it over, then I think it's a, I think it's a great deal for, for everyone, for the community, and, and obviously for the, for the restaurant too, because we got to support our, our local restaurants. So, thank you.
I'd like to associate myself with those comments, and I think it's a win not only for residents, but for visitors as well, that the amenities exist for all of us.
Thank you, Commissioners, and I do agree. And there seems to be a little, a bright light going on on the North Shore, and sometimes it takes someone to lead by example. So best of luck to, to your new endeavors. I can't personally make a motion.
I'd be happy to. I move that the Planning Commission find that the general plan of conformity, GPC 23-04, applied for by Diane De Michelle on the shoreline of Collier Avenue, Neese, does meet these, those findings of the Lake County general plan, and that the Planning Commission has reviewed and considered the Lake County general plan for this project to grant the road vacation of this portion of Collier Avenue, subject to the findings listed in the staff report dated May 23, 2024.
I have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries? Is that it? That's the only thing?
Yep.
Please note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there is a disagreement with the Planning Commission, an appeal to the Board of Supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 p.m. on or before the seventh calendar day following the Planning Commission's final determination. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Moving on. Our next item is scheduled for 9:20, public hearing in consideration for a proposed minor map modification, MMM 24-02, to approved Clear Lake Riviera Unit Number 4 subdivision map for a setback reduction along Broadmoor Way from 80 feet to 20 feet. The location is 9710 Broadmoor Way, Kelseyville, APN 043-551-49. The applicant is Lake Village Properties. Good morning, Max.
Thank you, Ruby. Good morning, Commissioners, again. My name is Max Stockton. I am an Assistant Planner for County of Lake, Planning Division. I'm here to present to you Broadmoor. Properties of Broadmoor are requesting to reduce the setbacks, so that would be a minor modification. The minor modification is 29710 Broadmoor, MMM 2402. In this presentation, I will be going over the permit request, vicinity map, project analysis, aspects of interest, and recommendations. In the permit request, the modification would be to the yellow portion here, which is addressed 9710 Broadmoor. The setbacks for this block were set at 80 feet back in 1965, when the subdivision was developed, created, and it was for the whole block. You'll see in the blue thatching there, there is a portion in the yellow that is substantially taller than the rest. That is to signify the 80-foot setback. With this, we are recommending it be reduced from 80 feet to 20 feet, and to do so, we'll be reviewing a few different concepts. Back in 2008, the properties to the east had their setbacks reduced to the 20-foot mark, and this applicant had come to us and asked for just that portion to be reduced approximately where this star is located on the map, in the old lots 15 and 16 specifically. Through the project analysis, we reviewed Chapter 3 of land use, and in this, we identified a healthy and diverse economic growth would be more possible with this reduction in setbacks, because the setbacks are in place to allow for building aerial, buildable area. In this area specifically, this is in relation to the zoning ordinance and how the county reviews these projects. That being said, one of the members of Agency Comment had mentioned the Cal Fire Regulations, and the Cal Fire Regulations seem to change from time to time. At this current time, they are 30-foot setback for properties in the state responsibility area, which this area is, of greater than one acre. But that could change. And so it is important for us to recognize that with that change, we are looking to specifically call out the set standards for this map. In Chapter 5, we recognize that we would like to attract tourism and local patrons alike, and this location is convenient to serve residential areas and support community centers alike as well.
That's a good idea.
This property is along the highway corridor 281 that becomes sort of a road, and a comment had come in regarding this. But the lots in question are actually off of Broadmoor Way and have no ingress egress from the highway itself. That has already been established on this property. Planning Division would like to recommend approval of minor map modification, MMM 2402, with the findings found in our staff report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Max. Is there any comments or questions from the Commissioners at all for staff?
I'd just like to acknowledge a green sheet we received from Mr. LaFrance.
Yes.
He's concerned that Caltrans has an objection, does not favor this modification. Is there, could you expand on that, or?
I apologize for that. Yes, it was an oversight by our department, specifically me, and I did reach out to Caltrans, and Caltrans has not replied to that request for review. And so that is why I mentioned that this specific request has no relation specific to the highway itself.
Sure. I also note that he's concerned about perhaps future construction in the area, and that this report notes that there are no such plans at this time. And I just want to make clear that that's, we have to go within the four corners of this particular application, so we're not here to consider proposed construction at this time.
Yes, sir. Absolutely, that is correct.
Thank you, Commissioner Hess. Commissioner Chavez, do you have any questions or comments before I open it up to the public?
Well, I did have a comment just on the, on the map. I think the setback was just in a weird area, like, like it kind of cut in like a rectangle. Was that specific for maybe like a turnaround or something before, or something like that? I don't know.
That was not identified, but those did, in the original map, intend to be two separate parcels, and they have actually been merged with this one parcel at this time. Much like you saw in the beginning, the neighboring parcels were broken up, but a series of three of them had been merged at some other past time as well.
Thank you.
I'll just add that we did dig through the original minutes.
Oh, wow.
Went down a fun rabbit hole, as well as the 2008 staff reports for the adjacent parcels requesting a similar setback, and we could not find a reason identified.
Yeah. It just seemed a little strange how it was just, you know. Yeah.
Yeah, and then also looking on the staff report, I believe it's page 2, with the, the red lines that show the, you know, that is the, the difference, that is the setback that's being requested, correct? That line for reference, the red line?
The reference for red line is the request to reduce, and the ones to the east, all eight of them, in fact, are already reduced.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, I will go ahead and open public comment. If anybody wishes to speak or has any concerns or questions, you're welcome to approach the podium. Or if you're in the Zoom room, if you raise your hand, we can unmute you and allow you to speak. All right, we have someone at the podium. If you could also print your first and last name on that sheet, we would appreciate it, and also repeat your first and last name.
Jim Maiulow.
Thank you. Thank you. Good morning.
Just a quick question. The setback is 20 feet. I thought it was less than that, but it is 20 feet all around?
You're, you're welcome to answer. Thank you, Max.
Yes, Jim, for this portion, to be in line with the neighboring parcels would be 20 feet. Yes, sir.
And did you say they already reduced the ones for those other parcels?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. So that's the only one that is not done, right?
Correct.
Okay.
There would still be 14.
Yeah, number, there's.
That would be the last one.
I apologize. That was my mistake. It was already been done.
Oh, it has?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, cool. Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry, that was in reference to my mistake on the staff report where I did leave one of the lots unaltered. All eight of those parcels neighboring this request have been reduced to 20 feet.
Okay, and let's just also make a note of that, Ruby, that there is to be a correction on the staff report, page two, in reference to the red lines and reduced setbacks. Please to also include parcel 15 on this map as well, please. It's just a quick little change. It's all good.
Yeah, okay. And then the other thing was you said you can't approve it without a full board, or with all?
No, whatever decision is made has to be unanimous, is all.
With who's ever here?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
When there's just three of us, like, there can't be a one yes and two no's, or vice versa.
Thanks.
Thank you. Public comment still open if anybody wishes to speak. Do we have any hands in the Zoom room, Ruby? No hands raised in the Zoom room, nobody else in chambers approaching the podium at this time. I will... Okay?
I'm sorry, I do have another question. If and when this is approved, do I get some type of certificate from you that I pass on to, I guess, or do you take care of all that?
Staff, could you kind of let them know what the, what the next, or anybody would let them know what the next steps would be?
Vance is here. He will like.
Oh, thank you.
Vance Rex, County Surveyor.
Good morning, Vance.
How are you? So the next step's gonna be, is gonna be a map modification that will have to be prepared by a licensed land surveyor submitted to me for review. Then we modified the map similar to the 2008. I think it was MM 0801, which is part of the staff report, so.
Okay.
Once Planning Commission approves, then the applicant can move forward from there.
Okay, thank you.
Does that mean I have to, does that mean I have to get a survey done, or do you get the survey done?
You'll have to have a surveyor prepare.
So, well, so before we put the carriage before the horse, let's, right now, we have the, the modification on, for approval or denial. That's what we have before us, and then at that time, whatever happens, I'm sure that your planner and staff and possibly Vance can help out with that. So, Iris, go ahead.
Can I make one clarification?
Absolutely.
Related to the setback and the last public comment, the setback for the C2 zoning district for front setbacks is actually zero unless it abuts a residential district. In this case, it doesn't, so technically per the zoning code, the setbacks are zero. However, the request was the 20 feet to be consistent with the other modified parcels.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Does that make?
Yeah, I don't want to.
Okay. We'll go ahead and close public comment since there's no hands in the Zoom room, closing public comment, and bringing it back to the Commission for either discussion or motion. It is, it is in District Five, so just keeping that in mind.
Yeah, I'm, I'm prepared to make a motion if.
Okay.
If there's no more comments from the Commission. I move that the Planning Commission approved the minor modification, MM 24-02, to the Clear Lake Riviera Unit Number Four subdivision map by reducing the front yard setbacks along Broadmoor Way for the original lots 15 and 16 from 80 feet to 20 feet at the current 9710 Broadmoor Way, Kelseyville, as identified as APN 043-551-49, with the findings listed in the staff report and as amended today, dated May 23, 2024.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Second, sorry, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries? It's the only motion, right?
Thank you.
Okay. Please note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there is a disagreement with the Planning Commission, an appeal to the Board of Supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 p.m. on or before the seventh calendar day following the Planning Commission's final determination.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Let me double check.
All right, everybody stand by while we do a little shuffling.
Let's double check that one. Usually for things like rezones or changes in, in the maps, it could be a longer one than our normal seven, so we're gonna, we'll confirm that if you wanted to take a moment.
Okay, and let's stand by on my, on my applicant note for the seven calendar day appeal period. We're going to just confirm whether it's 15 or seven, so let's just, we're gonna stand by on that.
I think that'll be housed in the general code for, of the state, so actually, if you'd like to move forward, it'll take Michelle a minute or two.
Okay, we're gonna take the pressure off Michelle. We will, we'll kind of circle back to that while she works on it. I appreciate everyone's patience. We're moving right along here. All right. All right. Time now is 9:37. We will move on to our next timed item for 9:35. Public hearing in consideration of major use permit, UP 20-96, and mitigated negative declaration, IS 20-116, for commercial cannabis cultivation, including 19 A-type 3 acres of outdoor commercial cannabis canopy, 2 Type 3B mixed light, uh, commercial, sorry, mixed light, commercial cannabis canopy consisting of 34,404 square feet, type 4 nursery, and type 313 B and C distribution licenses for cannabis transportation. Applicant is Highland Farms, Autumn Carcy, location 7508, 7533, 7634, and 7746 Highland Springs Road, and 7257, and 7357 Amber Ridge Road, Lakeport, APNs 007-006-27, 34, 35, 40, 41, and 007-057-02. Good morning, Ms. Mary.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Mary Claybon. I'm an Associate Planner with the Planning Division for the County of Lake. Today for your consideration is UP 20-96 and IS 20-116 for Highland Farms LP. The applicant is present today in chambers. On the agenda will be the permit request, project scope, site description, project analysis, aspects of interest, cumulative impacts, and recommendations and conditions. The permit request consists of 19 A-type 3 medium outdoor licenses consisting of 19 acres of outdoor commercial cannabis cultivation area. That's important to note, this is not for canopy, it's for cultivation area. Additionally, they are requesting 2 A-type 3B mixed light commercial cannabis canopy consisting of 34,404 square feet, type 4 nursery, type 13 B and C distribution. The total acreage of all parcels combined is 508.19 acres. As you can see within the vicinity map, I have listed the cultivation areas in which the canopy will occur with yellow stars, and the blue stars are the clustering parcels. The site is located to the west of Highland Springs in unincorporated Lake County, five miles west of Kelseyville, and seven miles south of Lakeport. The project site is zoned, general plan designation, rural lands and base zoning, rural lands. It is within the Kelseyville planning area within Supervisory District Four. The site description. Natural topography of the area gently slopes to the east with some isolated steeper areas. Proposed development is within a small valley that opens to the southeast. The site is generally covered with grasses and scattered fir trees, and setbacks from the cultivation areas are at least 100 feet from the property lines of the clustered proper, uh, parcels, and the nearest off-site residence is .41 miles from the project site. Two stages of development are proposed for this project. Stage one includes four outdoor cultivation gardens identified as A, B, C, and D on the first map there, including with that are 28 5,000-gallon water tanks for irrigation, 2 2,500-gallon water tanks for fire suppression, 3 10-by-12 sheds, 2 shipping containers, 44 parking spaces, and 4 ADA portable restroom facilities, solar panels, 3 25-kilowatt propane generators when solar is insufficient, and a backup emergency generator. During stage two of development, gardens A, B, and D will remain the same, however, there is a conversion of a portion of garden C to that mixed light cultivation within greenhouses. That is also where the type 4 nursery greenhouse is proposed. There is also a proposed two-story metal building for administrative and processing purposes, a single-story drying and storage building, a 50,000, a 65,000, and a 77,000-gallon water tank, so three separate tanks, interior roadway improvements for PRC 4290 and 4291 requirements, a new PG&E service installation, solar panels, roof mount on top of the administrative processing facility, and that will include 12-volt deep-cycle batteries for energy storage, and a 40-kilowatt diesel generator with three 500-gallon fuel storage tanks. Existing uses at the site include a residence, three wells to be used for cultivation activities, deeded access driveway, and interior roadway improvements, and a security gate two feet wider than the width of the traffic lane with a minimum of 14 feet of unobstructed horizontal clearance and 15 feet of unobstructed vertical clearance. The regulations reviewed for compliance include the Lake County General Plan, the Kelseyville Area Plan, the Lake County Zoning Ordinance, and California State Regulations. Within the Lake County General Plan, the policies were reviewed. There were no conflicting policies within the general plan, but there are no specific policies addressing commercial cannabis cultivation. So with that, the chapters within the general plan that were reviewed were Chapter Three Land Use, Chapter Seven Health and Safety, and Chapter Eleven Water Resources. So with, within the Kelseyville Area Plan, there are four bullet points that I identified for this project analysis, and to note, the applicant is required to adhere to the State Water Resources Control Board cannabis cultivation policy, requiring runoff to be retained on-site, mitigating off-site downstream drainage impacts. The applicant has provided a hydrological analysis and a drought management plan, as well as an archaeological study that recommends mitigation measures that have been incorporated into the draft initial study and mitigated negative declaration, and also the conditions of approval, which is attachment two to the staff report. The zoning ordinance was also reviewed, Article Seven Rural Lands, and Article 27 Uses Generally Permitted. The SEQA initial study found that the project could cause potential impacts to the following resources: aesthetics, air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, energy, geology and soils, hazards and hazardous materials, hydrology and water quality, noise, tribal cultural resources, and wildfire. A mitigated negative declaration is the proposed SEQA environmental determination for the project. All identified impacts can be reduced to less than significant with mitigation. The public comment period occurred from April 8, 2024 to May 7, 2024, and the mitigations are outlined in the staff report attachments to draft conditions of approval and attachment for draft initial study mitigated negative declaration. Notification of the project was sent to local tribes on December 16, 2020. Habemotol Pomo of Upper Lake responded and did not request consultation. The notice of intent and legal notice for this hearing were provided to tribes. I'm gonna move on into the aspects of interest for this project. While the applicant proposes two stages of development, stage one of the project, the applicant is applying for 19 A-type 3 acres of outdoor commercial cannabis cultivation area rather than canopy area to allow for future adjustments in cultivation style and layout within the footprint of the approved cultivation area. While the 19 license types would typically allow for 19 acres of outdoor cannabis canopy, the applicant proposes a maximum of 5.9 acres of outdoor plant canopy, which is also listed as 16.13 acres of canopy to include rows and aisleways to be accounted for. The applicant intends to request a reduction of the actual square footage that's grown every year for the canopy with the cultivation taxes as determined for each growing season for the duration of the use permit. So basically, the applicant is requesting the flexibility to be allowed to change the garden setup style for what works best over the duration of the 10 years of the use of the use permit. An additional aspect of interest is access. The property is accessed from Highland Springs Road by a private deeded access roadway. There is a security gate there as present in the previous slide for existing features. This roadway would require upgrades during stage two of development when the permanent structures would be put into place.
Does that mean it would not be 4290 compliant until stage two?
That is correct. That is correct. So for the stage one of development, only outdoor cultivation is proposed.
Does that answer, does that kind of? Okay. Go ahead, Mary.
Oh, I think I went too far. Okay. So, the water use is another aspect of interest for this project considering its size, and with that, all major and minor use permit applicants are required to submit a hydrological analysis and are required to submit annual estimated usage. The total estimated water for the facility is 22.7 acre-feet per year, which represents- The total estimated water for the facility is 22.7 acre-feet per year, which represents 36% of the conservatively estimated 62.5 acre-feet per year of groundwater recharge potential for the project site. The proposed monthly water consumption is required for all cannabis use permit applications. Water use monitoring is required and is reported to CDD within the project performance reports as a part of annual compliance monitoring. A drought management plan was submitted for water conservation methods during declared drought emergency for this project. Within stage one of the project, only outdoor cultivation is proposed. The power requirements for this project during stage one would be based on the solar panels that are currently existing at the site for the water, the well pumps, and three 25-kilowatt propane generators. Generators would only be used during the startup of the well pump and when solar is inefficient. Under the full build-out, the proposed project would require an electrical upgrade, which would be applied for during the building permit process. Stage-two power from PG&E would be brought through overhead lines as new service to the proposed buildings. There is an application in with PG&E currently, and this would provide 75% of the total electricity need to serve the proposed project. The existing PG&E lines within the vicinity of the project site would be extended to the project site boundary. Grading would be required to prepare cultivation areas, construction of buildings, installation of water irrigation and electrical lines, the improvement of existing access driveway and new cultivation access roadways, and installation of the parking lot and loading zones. The initial segment of access road connecting to Highland Springs Road would be graded in order to straighten the segment for 4290 and 4291 compliance. During stage two, eight existing culverts on the project site would be upgraded, and one new culvert would be added between cultivation areas A and C in accordance with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife Lake and Stream Bed Alteration Agreement. An additional aspect of interest were the easements for the site. The parcels incorporated into the project include two deeded easements. According to the grant deed, the easement right for ingress and egress is at any time. The second easement was identified as a roadway and utility easement, in which the applicant intends to have a PG&E pole installed. These easements were confirmed by Assessor Recorder Parcel Maps Book 21. So cumulative impacts for this project. Within one mile of the proposed project, there are zero pending and two approved projects. Within three miles of the proposed project, there are two pending and eight approved projects. And it is important to note that within three miles, there is actually one site that has two permitted use permits and one pending. So that pending application would combine those three use permit applications, pending and approved, into that one project. So that is one that we have for an amendment. So while it states that there are currently a significant amount within that area, three of them actually exist within one site.
Not separate from what we're concerned.
The environmental recommendations are to adopt mitigated negative declaration initial study IS 20-116 for use permit UP 20-96 with findings found in the staff report. Major use permit recommendations, approve use permit UP 2096 with the proposed conditions of approval and with the findings found in the staff report. The applicant is present and also has prepared a slideshow as well.
Thank you, Mary. And do we have the slideshow already set up? Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Could we check if the Zoom room is active? Because I've had some people that have had difficulty logging in, so I want to make sure that that's working.
Thank you.
Autumn Karsee.
Ruby, if you have a moment, can you confirm that we are able to communicate with people in the Zoom room? Um, oh. Okay. If you are in the Zoom room, can you raise your hand, just so I could see if we can get some type of dialogue-ish going?
Somebody in there.
Yeah, so if you can hear me, somebody in there, raise your hand. Okay, you guys are all raising your hand in the Zoom land. Thank you so much. And so that we can do an audio check, so that's a good thing, and then they can see us, because I can see us on Zoom. And then we just want to make sure we can, when we share the screen here, that they can see her presentation as well. All right. If by chance, when we go into the presentation, if someone in the Zoom land, if you cannot see, please raise your hand or put something in the chat to get our attention. We appreciate that.
It's one right below mine. Not a problem.
It looks like we might be getting where we need to be. Excellent. All right. Is this what you would like to see, Autumn?
Yes, this is great. Thank you.
Okay. Floor is yours. If you, if you could just, for the, for grins, just state your first and last name for us.
Good morning. My name is Autumn Karsee, and thank you for having me today. This has been the culmination of about four years of work to get to this point, and very happy to be here. So I'm presenting Highland Farms, and I'll keep this shorter than some of my typical presentations, because I just want to highlight a few key points. I think Mary did a great job on the previous presentation, so I don't want to take too much of your time this morning. You can pop to the next slide. So Highland Farms is the accumulation of our company's four projects within Lake. We currently employ 14 people full-time with Comprehensive Benefits Plan. Everyone in our organization makes over $20 an hour, and Highland Springs will add an additional 10 employees full-time. Highland Farms, I'm not sure whether this is jumbling, but it's a beautiful mountain valley. The property consists of 508 acres, of which there is a disturbance proposed of 27.7 acres, which equals less than 5%, or 5.3% total developed area. We're surrounded by mountains on all sides. The nearest residence is approximately 27, 24 feet away. The project site is not visible from the residence. The fire mitigation efforts. So currently, we have concerns about this neighborhood on the backside of Vernal Drive to the north here. There's really no way out of there if there's a fire. There's one way in and one way out. So by developing and bringing power through Amber Ridge Court, it also provides an exit for the neighboring residents. Our initial study mitigated negative declaration, or ISMND, our biologists have completed six site visits to the property over the years. We started this project back in 2020, and so as things progressed, CDD required more and more compliance. We've met or exceeded all of those compliance efforts. And Montrose Environmental has been retained by the State of California to consult on SEQA cannabis policymaking, then one of the largest, or one of the foremost leading experts on SEQA analysis with relation to cannabis cultivation developments. We were lucky enough to get them before they became the state's consultant. CDD has thoroughly vetted all research and documentation and has determined that Highland Farms UP 2096 meets all necessary qualifications. Our attorney, Rutan and Tucker, who's a land use attorney, very prominent land use attorney, is also in the Zoom room and has thoroughly reviewed and approved all documentation related to this application. This is a little bit about our water conservation practices. So we have our water availability analysis prepared by Summit Engineering. They're also on the line in the Zoom room if we have any questions about the water availability analysis. We have onsite state-of-the-art Davis weather stations. We use Grow Point soil-based moisture sensors to test the ground moisture. We implement micro-drip irrigation, so we're not overfeeding, overfeeding the plants. We implement organic mulch and compost. We use low-till or no-till agriculture practices, seasonal cover crops, deficit irrigation strategies, and introduction of native grasses. Our integrated pest management plan, because we're cannabis, we have to follow some of the stringent, most stringent measures with, related to any type of agriculture. So we're not allowed to spray anything that's not on the list at the CDFA. And then we even go above and beyond that to an organic or OMRi certification on all of our products. We also implement GAAP and OCal certification on all of our projects, which is good agricultural practices. An OCal certification is the cannabis certification of organic, since it's, organic is federally trademarked, we cannot use that word. So California implemented the OCal certification in place of that. And then everything goes back to our manufacturing and processing facility in Lower Lake, which we've built, implemented, and we're currently operational. We ensure that all processes from start to finish generate, that generate tax dollars and jobs, they stay in Lake County. So Lake County is largely a wholesale environment for cannabis. It's dried, it's put into large bags, and then it's sent off for processing, when really the highest margins are retained within individual package sizes. So keeping all of that revenue within Lake County is very important. And that's it. I'm happy to answer anybody else's questions.
Thank you, Autumn. Any questions or concerns for the applicant before I open it up for public comment?
I do have a few questions.
Sure.
Les Karseets.
Hello.
Good to see you again.
You too.
In reading the staff report, it appears that 75% of your ultimate power would be PG&E-generated and 25% captured in solar.
Correct.
And yet, solar is coming before PG&E. And I realize you can't apply for PG&E until your project is approved, but does that mean in a simplistic way, you're operating at 25% power for however long it takes PG&E to agree to do the poles and all the rest?
Yeah, so for the outdoor farm, we really only have to power the three well pumps on the property, and our power is very minimal for outdoor. Once we implement the greenhouse and processing facilities, we will need PG&E power.
Sure. There's one public comment I always like to acknowledge that we've heard from the public, and Mr. Herzog.
Yes.
Who is, he's concerned about the placement of power poles along Amber Ridge Road, and he says that one of the cultivation sites, part of it is actually on property he owns. Could you clarify that?
Absolutely. So we had a survey done, which I have supplied to Mr. Herzog. I had our staff go out there and check this week to make sure that our maps were correct. We lined up the markers, we went on X-Hunt and marked everything, and Mary's even confirmed that our site is not, in fact, anywhere near Mr. Herzog's property, and I would not cultivate on somebody else's property. And then in relation to the power poles being brought through Amber Ridge Court, I think it's important to develop that road for fire access, and we do have a deeded easement through there.
Mm-hmm. And when do you anticipate stage two beginning? I'm curious about the idea of not being 4290 compliant until stage two is begun.
Yeah, and as a county, within the ordinance for outdoor canopy, you do not have to be 4290 compliant. There are no farms within the county that are 4290 compliant that are outdoor cultivation only. Once you put one building on that property over 120 square feet, I believe it triggers the 4290. In terms of development and timeline, that largely depends on PG&E. I know that they're pretty far out with their timelines, so it could take up to two years to get approvals.
I've heard two or three years.
Yeah, two to three.
Sorry.
It's okay. And I'd just like to add, I did supply Mr. Herzog a copy of our survey that was accepted by the county surveyor's office.
Sure. Is the grading mentioned? Does that involve the taking of trees?
There's not really a lot of trees on the property. I think there, I'd have to check, there might be a couple where the processing facility is, but most of those have fallen in the last winter storm, so I don't think we're taking any healthy trees on this project.
Okay, thank you. And Audubon Redbud, Redbud Audubon, expressed some concerns about wetlands and their identification and delineation.
Yes.
And in the, all of the different water analyses, I noticed the word "wetland" only appeared once in three different documents. Is that because you dispute the existence of those wetlands, or?
I think that the documentation may have been misinterpreted, because we've had so many biology reports and then subsequent biology reports to meet the requirement set forth by the CDD. So I actually green-sheeted a response to that from our biologist, and I'm happy to read it if you're interested.
I saw that, but it didn't quite answer my, speak to my concern. Is there, there are wetlands on site, but not within the?
Not within the project boundary, and yeah, we're more than, I think, 200 feet away from them.
Thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
So one of my main concerns, well, it was after reading some of these green sheets that we got, was regarding, obviously regarding the water. That's like people's main concern, especially for neighboring wells. But looking at the map, from something that you provided, that the closest residence is almost 3,000 feet away. I don't know, I'm not an expert on hydrology, but was the, was that, any neighboring wells, were they looked at to see what that radius of influence would be, and if they would be affected at all?
I don't believe they would be affected. We have really significant water in this area, so we have three wells, and all of them are, well, I think it's a, cumulatively, it's around 325 gallons a minute, if I'm not mistaken, on our property, and we would be using a fraction of that. So as Mary mentioned, because we are going for 19 licenses, since I came to this county, they've changed the definition of canopy about three different times. So I wanted to make sure if you guys decide to change the definition again, we're not losing licenses or canopy space.
Or have to come and change anything.
Yes. So the, the studies that have been done was if we completely packed in the fenced-in area with no aisleways or walkways, which we would never do, and just grew cannabis, and then the hydrology reports support that as well. So really, it would be probably less than half of what you're looking at on the hydrology reports, and we have more than sufficient water.
Yep. And also.
And I have a hydrologist on the line, too. They can probably explain it a little bit better.
Also, the, the well reports are all, are ones from 2021 and two are from 2021, and I believe those are like pretty dry years.
Yes, very dry years.
Yeah, so, I mean, now, we're not in a, in a drought anymore.
Yeah.
We haven't been for this last couple months.
Right.
In all of California, so, I mean, who's, we don't know if we're going to go back to a drought, but I do remember those years, it was really, really bad. So even on the worst years, I think there would be sufficient water there.
And I'd like to add that the wells are pumping the 129 gallons a minute, or whatever it is, because we chose to put a pump that would be supported by solar and a generator. According to our well driller, we could have put a much larger pump in there if we had the power to sustain it, and it might even pump 300 gallons a minute out of a H-well.
Just a question, how's the, I mean, it's always important to, to reach out to, to the neighbors and obviously get their feedback, just to see what they think. the neighbors and obviously get their feedback, just to see what they think of the project. Has anybody reached out to you guys, or how many neighbors have reached out?
Yeah, just Mr. Herzog, who was on the slide that I demonstrated, it's nearly 3,000 feet away, reached out to me, provided him a copy of my survey. Happy to, to work with him and talk about the project.
Thank you.
Would you be making use of those, that one generator to supplement your solar power in this first stage?
Yeah, just when the wells kick on, when you have that peak, kick on of the wells, and then if power's not sufficient from solar.
We will, we have the opportunity to open it up for public comment. If anyone in the Zoom room or in chambers wishes to speak, you're welcome to approach the podium.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Karsity. Good morning. Please be sure to state your first and last name and print it down there on the paper for me.
Good morning, my name is Tom Lasik. Just finished writing this. I live off of Ridge Road, which feeds into Highland Springs Road, and also Amber Ridge Court feeds into Ridge Road from the back. Just to maybe follow up on Mr. Chavez's questions, on the hydrology report, their own hydrology report shows their sphere of impact to include Mr. Herzog's spring. He doesn't have a well, he works, lives off a spring. So something to point out. I'm here to talk about the cumulative effects. We are surrounded by several cannabis operations, and many of them use Highland Springs Road as the major corridor to get to town. And I'm recommending that before any more applications are approved, that that cumulative effect and the impact of Highland Springs Road going through the parkland be addressed. At the entrance, for those who aren't familiar with Highland Springs Road, it's a two lane road until just before the park. It then magically turns into single lane roads. If you go straight, you go into the main park entrance, which is East Highland Springs. If you go right, it makes a hard bank to the right, which is kind of a blind curve. And you have people going downhill on Highland Springs, going head on with people uphill. Also, if you're going downhill on Highland Springs Road, you gotta cross over the road to?
That little?
Yeah, you know what I'm talking about.
It's almost like a Y.
Right, so that's really, really been a problem, and it's getting more and more so, especially with the heavier vehicles that cannabis operations have on that road. There are no speed limit signs. The applicant says we'll follow the speed limit, but unfortunately, the county has no speed limit signs whatsoever on any length of Highland Springs Road, all the way from Big Valley, all the way to the county line. There's nothing to indicate the several blind curves that are on that single lane road. There are no lane markings. There's nothing there to suggest, except for one sign that says, that has the equestrian, but it's a park. And so we have on a regular basis, dog walkers, hikers, bicyclists, equestrian people that use that lane. It's a single lane road, and they walk on the road. And there are many times that I personally have had to dodge other cars or whatever to avoid an accident, moving up the road. So before anything gets done, I would recommend the county step up and address that cumulative effect. At the entrance, for this applicant, it goes up and over a serpentine formation. I'm surprised it really wasn't mentioned, but for those who don't know, serpentine in dust form is a known toxin, it's carcinogenic, and there's supposed to be special mitigation efforts employed if you're gonna do any type of construction because of the dust. The staff report suggests pavement or gravel. I would insist that, because it is still on county property, that that actually be paved because the dust, even after gravel won't suffice, it would have to be paved to avoid the liability and risk of asbestos type dust going through. The other concern I have is that the one mile of road from Highland Springs Road to the project site wasn't properly assessed by the biologist. If you look at the biological assessment report, talks about the rare native species that are there, but only says not on the project site. It doesn't address the road. They intend to move hundreds of thousands of yards of material to make the road accessible. And as I mentioned, some of that is, at least the first several, at least 600 by satellite and probably more, is over that serpentine formation, and it's known that 40 to 45% of the plants that can exist on serpentine soils are endangered or threatened, and that was not studied. So that's the other concern I have, is that before stage one or stage two, a proper biological study be done, the biological assessment report itself says another study should be done on, onsite because of the seasonal, seasonality of certain flora and fauna. It says that there are no golden eagles. We know there is a golden eagle nesting in that area. I've seen it myself on Highland Springs Road, and Mr. Herzog has seen it on his property.
Okay.
So that's, right now, we, I don't recommend approving it until those concerns are addressed, and a lot of it's the cumulative effect of so many people now using Highland Springs Road. It's not safe, and a proper biological assessment. And I've got, you know, I'm sure my neighbors will talk about their water concerns.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? Thank you. Ruby, keep the timer.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Sarah Bodnar, and I'm a consultant representing Highland Farms, and I wanted to respond to a couple of the comments that were just made to provide some more information. I think sometimes one project comes up, and it opens up concerns about the bigger picture, right? And traffic and the way usage has changed over a long period of time. As it pertains to this project, this farm is not located on the single lane road, and additionally, the specific segment of road that was just mentioned was studied by the biologists, and no serpentine was found. Sometimes what appears on the GIS is thought to be existent in a region is not actually found in the soil. So they didn't come up with that, the result. The biologist studied the entire road. If ever that, those results were to be different, they would, of course, take appropriate mitigation measures. So I just wanted to address that, and then say that, you know, we're four years in, there is, there is in no way any chance that this project has been rushed or forced through. We can safely say that. That it has gone through every single step in terms of compliance and environmental study, sometimes, multiple times, the biologist alone, we're out there six times in that timeframe. There's been a lot of back and forth with agencies as questions have come up. Each question has been asked and answered using reputable statewide recognized consultants. So there's a lot of brain power behind this project and a lot of effort to do it right. It's also just abundantly resourced in terms of water. That well is a gusher. And part of the hydrologic, hydrological analysis that happens looks at the impact on neighboring wells, so that has also been addressed. I think, you know, in, in short, I would say if we want a poster child for what compliance looks like, that is this project. And if we want an example of, of a good operation in Lake County, that is this project. And I would recommend that you find that it meets all of the requirements of the land use project and approve Highland Farms today. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak? We can, if you'd like, we can have someone else who hasn't spoke yet. Good morning, please state your first and last name.
Morning, my name is Doug Herzog.
Good morning.
I live up there with me, my wife, my two older parents. We rely on that water, and I'm afraid our spring might go dry. A couple summers ago, I was down to like 1 gallon every 15 minutes. I have waterfowl, I have animals. I have basically a five acre pond, you know, it depends on that water for health. I'm just concerned what kind of guarantee I could have if that, my well, my spring goes dry. You know, I go through about 10,000 gallons a week. I use it for my farm, my business, and to water all my animals. So that's all I would need to say, because if that goes dry, we have a money pit, and our, and our land is gone. I just want some kind of guarantee that, you know, we won't run out of water. Thanks.
And I appreciate everyone's patience in the Zoom room. I do see your hands, and I will make my way to you after your comment. Please state your first and last name again.
Tom Lasik again, just to respond to a couple of the comments that were made by the applicant's personnel. If Highland Springs Road is a two lane road, why is it not marked? There's no center line.
We're gonna, I'm gonna bring it back. We're, I understand that the roads are a concern, but this isn't going to be a ping and pong, back and forth.
I hope not, but.
And it's not the, it's not technically the applicant's responsibility to have the roads marked.
No.
We've already gone over the, the county needs to maintain them, so we've already established that, so after that.
And then the other one is, that absolutely is a serpentine formation. You can go there yourself and pick the rock up, the road cuts right through it, it's serpentine.
Okay.
So, and the biological report, when it comes to the type of stuff that is on serpentine soils, it says not on the project site, but it does not mention the road.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lasik? Have you had a conversation with the applicant regarding that section of the road in serpentine? It sounds like from her previous comments, she's willing to work on such an issue. I just don't know if you've interacted?
No, we haven't. We, I, we, we were out of town for most of April and early May. We got the notice from Mary. We've responded to Mary. As regards to the, the work on the, the access, the, the main concern is that serpentine section because of the dust.
Certainly appreciate that.
Yeah, and, you know, you got people walking around and stuff like that.
I would encourage you to speak directly with the applicant about that if you could.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Sandra Vielma, and I am the Director of Human Resources for Alchemy 29. I am proud to be part of this local business and this project, and we're lucky to be operating within Lake County. I have been recruiting, you know, within this county within the last 15 years, and I find that this project will only bring additional jobs and resources to this community. One thing that sets our business apart from low is our level of professionalism and our high standards. And this looks like the highest commitment to compliance and integrity from HR to environmental stewardship. In addition to our professionalism, we are people. We are people who live, shop, and vote here, and we have families and pets, and we participate in local events, and we are part of this community. A vote to support this project is more than just a land use permit. It is about supporting all of us. Thank you.
Is public comment still open? You're welcome to approach the podium. Good morning. Please be sure to state your first and last name and write it down on the list for staff.
Good morning, commissioners, county staff. My name is Margot Kambara. I would like to share an observation and make, ask a question and then make a comment. First, my observation. It's my understanding that the project parcel borders public land, Highland Springs County Park, and if that's the case, there's a 1,000 foot setback required. Project plan cites 100 to 200 foot setback. The second point is a question. Has the applicant returned to, to compliance with Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board? And I'm referring to the applicant's annual monitoring report, AMR, which was due in March 2023, but as of September 2023, the report was late. And this is coming from a memo from the water board. So my question is, if the applicant isn't in compliance, can the permit application proceed? I bring this up again because there are high stakes involved, and we appreciate the candor in the application, acknowledging that there are a lot of unknowns about this, about this project. It is big, it is complex. In the height of summer, it's planning to use 1 million gallons of water a month. And among the unknowns that we don't know is truly, what is going to be the impact on the local water table? Sure, we have water flow reports, but they were done in winter when water flow is abundant. Also, one of those well reports was done before the emergency drought declaration. The well report was done in December 2020. The emergency drought declaration wasn't made until July 2021. So at the bare minimum, we're not saying, oh, nix this project and forever ban it from, you know, the table. No, we're saying, there is still some more information that we really need to make an informed decision. And we get that same message from a letter from, I'm sorry, the Department of Cannabis Control to our county planner, Mary Clayburn, saying, yeah, when you're taking a look at this application, don't forget about cumulative impacts, and that includes what's happening to water. And it includes what's happening, not only this particular project, but consider our neighbor Doug Herzog and his family. He is already adjacent to an, to an approved cannabis project with a major permit. He, and Doug is using, and his family is using a spring. The study, the, the study focused on well, well water and well water supply, not a spring that is at a higher elevation than the applicant's growth site. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Good morning. My name is William Canistras. I'm the general manager for Alchemy 29. I just wanted to speak in response to the water board, what was stated as far as being out of compliance. Alchemy 29 is in full compliance for all properties with water board reporting. If that was checked in September, that might have been out of date, but we have all our invoicing and records to show that we're in full compliance through until next March. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. I'm gonna look in the Zoom room, Ruby. Do we have our hands, do we have any hands raised in the Zoom room?
Yes.
Participant in the Zoom room, Zoom user, please state your first and last name, and you will have three minutes to speak.
Zoom user, are you available? If you're, but what was that? Yeah, we're gonna try to come, we're gonna go back to him.
Zoom participant Donna McQuinn, you are allowed to speak. You have three minutes. Please state your first and last name.
Donna McQuinn, Redbud Audubon, and in the Zoom room, we weren't sworn in. I don't know if that's necessary before I begin. We didn't have any audio at the beginning.
No, Donna, I don't believe it's necessary, but as long as you are stating your first and last name, we'll be able to keep track that way. I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. I'll be brief. The potential wetlands on site were assessed based on the likelihood to satisfy the three tier wetland delineation criteria used by the Army Corps of Engineers Wetland Delineation Manual. And my question is, was the protocol wetland delineation survey done? And what was the? And what was the date of that? I was not privy to that information. And also, just thanking everyone else for the comments. There are 107 different bird species that occupy this area, and we have had the golden eagle nesting reported, the osprey nest there, and also pygmy owl sightings. And I will take my answer for the delineation offline. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have anyone that is able to work on that to answer Donna's question?
Is there not a hydrologist in the room?
Or on the Zoom?
Did you say something about that, Autumn? Perhaps that person could speak.
If you are the hydrologist in the Zoom room, I just saw your hand go up. Is there a hand up? Or who can we, is there a name we could look for?
Gina.
Gina?
Yes.
Go for it.
Hi, my name's Gina Jacconi. I'm a licensed civil engineer, not a hydrologist, but we prepared the water availability analysis. I don't know if the biologist is online, but they might be able to better speak to the wetland delineation because that was a part of their scope. On the water side, there have been a couple of things thrown out there, but, you know, in terms of a nearby spring and the impact to the spring. So this project doesn't rely on any surface water. It's relying on groundwater, which is fairly deep in comparison to, you know, what might be recharging a spring. So as part of our report, we demonstrated that the project can be, can be, the water demands can be met by that deep well. It provided a sustained yield. There was a four-hour test done, and the project water demands are much less than what the anticipated recharge is. The recharge calculations in our report reflect only 5% of anticipated precipitate, average precipitation making its way back into the groundwater supplier, the aquifer. So it's a very conservative analysis to demonstrate that the water demands for the project are plentiful, as well as, a part of our report included analyzing the drawdown on nearby wells. We looked at 500 feet out, what the impact would be if a well was pumping at 75 gallons a minute for 24 hours a day. What would that impact be at the property line? And it was minimal. So I believe that all of those answers, you know, related to water are included in our analysis. It might just be a misinterpretation of what people are looking at.
Thank you. All right.
Zoom participant Nora, please state your first and last name, and you have three minutes to speak.
Good morning, planning commissioners. Nora Dalbaka, President of the Lake County Cannabis Alliance, calling to, to express my excitement that this project has made it to the, to the Planning Commission and to, and to just, I'd like to personally talk about, about Autumn Carthy as a land steward. If any of you have been to any of her other, her other sites and properties, Autumn is, is an amazing, is an amazing steward of the land. She is, she knows the flora, the fauna, the native, the native plants and animals that are on there, and celebrates and saves them. She was educating folks this week on rattlesnakes on her property and ensuring that they were safely and kindly moved and not, and not dispatched. And that's just, that just goes to, to say the kind of operator that she is in terms of the way that she treats her land. She treats her employees with the same kind of care. And the jobs that will be brought to the county with every project that, that Autumn has are living wage jobs with benefits, and that's not often the case around here. She is a world-class operator, and we're really lucky to have her here. There are requirements at the state level and at the county level to continue to monitor the, the health of the aquifers and the water supply. And I am quite certain that if there were any issues, that, that Autumn would address them. She's, she's exactly the kind of, the kind of operator that we want to have around here. And my dog agrees.
Agrees.
So I, I think you can, you can very confidently move this, move this project and know that if there are any issues, which I don't expect there to be, that Autumn will work respectfully with her neighbors, with the county, and with any state agency. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you for your comment and taking the time. All right. Is there any, we still have hands up, Ms. Ruby? No more hands in the Zoom room? I think we still have public comment open, so if you do want to speak, please do raise your hand in the Zoom room. We'll unmute you, and we'll give you an opportunity to speak at the podium.
My name is Doug Herzog again. All these hydrologist reports are fine and dandy, but what is if they're wrong? What's gonna happen to us? And, you know, the natives, so that's all I need to say. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Hess?
I'm trying to remember the last name of the, of your engineer, Jacconi. I believe she said somebody involved with the biological assessment might be better equipped to deal with the question of wetland delineation. Is there a biologist in the room, so to speak? Well, just, she-
We need you to speak into the mic, Commissioner Hess, just a little bit closer. That's what Jake said. There we go.
I don't really know the answer to your question, which is a question to my question. She simply said that the biologist involved with the, with that study, biological assessment, might be better equipped to address the wetland delineation issue.
Yeah, I think it's actually- Sarah Bodnar. The biologist wasn't available to participate in the hearing today, but they provided the written comments, which we green-sheated, and I'll just kind of underline what they said the due diligence had been done around wetland detection. I'm reading directly from the comments here, from Graining and Associates. The location and extent of, extents of wetlands originally detected during the 2020 biological assessment were demarcated by Pinecrest Environmental Consulting in 2021, and then again by AES Montrose in 2022, and are reflected in the updated site plans. So any, any wetlands that were detected were included and demarcated.
Does that answer, it's sufficient? Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Do you mind if I add to that?
Please.
Michelle Iris, I should say, first, principal planner. Staff also double-checked regarding that item or that comment, and throughout the biological report included in Attachment 11, it notes that, you know, all of the different, there's at least one, two, three, four, or five bio memorandums. And after the original 2020 assessment was concluded, Section 2.4 of the main body of the bio report, that's page 11 of that report, discusses jurisdictional waters, including potential wetlands. And essentially, it says that a formal delineation was not completed because the project would be over 100 feet of that feature. And then continuing on, there are several other sections, including 4.4, that notes the same thing and does require the, the boundaries of that to be delineated prior to construction, just to ensure that the project stays over 100 feet away from that. And then the February 11th, 2022 memo provided by AES is included on page 88 of the PDF of Attachment 11. Again, discusses wetlands and essentially states the same thing, that because they are so far away from them, a formal delineation was not completed, but the wetlands were mapped and identified as resources throughout all of those different bio reports.
Okay. Thank you for that. I do still have public comment open. One more time in the Zoom room, do we have anybody that wishes to speak? Yes, we do.
Donna, go ahead and state your first and last name. You'll have three minutes.
Donna McQuince, Redbud Audubon. Again, I'd like to follow up on that. Dr. Chris Devittorio from Pinecrest's original 2020 initial study, he is quoted in saying, however, protocol-level wetland delineation was not performed, and he did mention time constraints, and he only monitored the flat area. He didn't do the whole project. And it is he that is quoted as saying, a protocol wetland delineation survey should be done on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Looks like there's no one else that wishes to speak in chambers. No more hands in the Zoom room. I do appreciate-
Hey, I do. Why am I not in?
Oh, there, there you are. Hi, do you need, would you like to speak?
I, I do, I do, yes.
Okay.
I don't know why you didn't see my hand.
I'm not sure either. Please be sure to state your first and last name, and we'll give you three minutes to speak.
Certainly. My name's Maria Khan, and I did review the documentation for this, and I, I have a big concern about the wetlands, that a huge percentage of our wetlands have been destroyed, and they're a critical component for a healthy ecosystem, and I think that we need to actually be concerned. A hundred feet is not very far. If you own any sort of property or like an acre parcel, 100 feet's not, not far. I mean, I weed whack that for around my buildings. So I think that we really do need to protect those. Also, the project mentions a lot of grading activities and bringing in dirt for cultivation and fill during the gradings, and that outside dirt will introduce non-native organisms, bacteria, fungi, seeds, and insects to the area that could be considered invasive. What we experienced with the Sowers project in High Valley is that when they graded that property and they went through the stream beds, it created a lot of downstream silt that clogged up our culverts. So my one culvert going through my road is half-full of silt and debris that came from that site. And so also mentioning, we do get heavy rains, and that stuff will all wash into those rivers, waterways and streams that are on that property, and probably will create real reparable damage to that area. There is also a huge use of solar panels, batteries, propane generators, and diesel generators that could create a potential fire hazard. And even though they're going to have PG&E come in and, or try to have PG&E put overhead lines, it doesn't make sense to me that they would do that considering the big project underway where they're undergrounding everything to prevent fires. So I, I don't quite understand that approach, or why they would do that in such a heavily wooded area that is a high-fire danger area. And my last little comment is about all the jobs that are brought to the county with these projects, and they are minimal, to say the least, when they're gonna hire 10 people here, or, you know, six people will be working on the property. It just doesn't seem like that's a very good argument for these projects that really can create quite an environmental impact. Oh, and another comment I had is that I noticed that all of these projects all use a mitigated negative degradation to minimize the people's concerns and the nuisances that these projects bring to our homes and our neighborhoods. And I think that there have been several of them. A lot of neighbors can tell you that there are these projects that have been abandoned and left just absolute disasters near them. And I think we need to really rethink the use of environmental impact reports for these larger projects, because it's clear that they do impact us. And so that would be my comment for this project. I think you should deny it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anybody else in the Zoom room wishing to speak? Okay. Just making sure one last time, don't want to leave anybody out. All right. I will officially close public comment and, and bring it back to the commission for discussion a little bit.
Commissioner Chair Price, if it's okay, there is one aspect of public input that staff would like to have a few minutes to review.
Absolutely.
If you wouldn't mind taking about a five-minute break.
Okay, I'm showing time now at 10:45. We will take a five-minute break and be back at 10:50. All right, welcome back. I believe staff has had enough time to figure out what they needed to figure out. Director Turner?
Yes, thank you for that, that break. There were a couple points that staff just wanted to seek additional clarification. The first one was the, the distance from the proposed cultivation site to the public lands. So, excuse me, Ordinance 3096 offers further clarification on that setback distance of 1,000 feet to the public lands, and it does state the following. Commercial cannabis cultivation is prohibited within 1,000 feet of the following areas or uses. Public lands where, because of development or other actions, it is clear that the public is invited to use such locations as places of recreation and other destination activities, including but not limited to hiking, birdwatching, equestrian activities, and camping. We took a look at then the map of the trail system of Highland Springs, and the active, the active trails that are used or offered for the public to access are not within that 1,000-foot setback. So that part is clarified for staff. Secondly, the condition, status of Highland Springs Road. I sent a quick email up to DPW just to find out the county's understanding of Highland Springs Road, specifically that portion that goes towards Ridge Road, not the branch that goes off to the park.
Oh, yeah.
Their reply is, the portion of the road you describe is considered Highland Springs Road. It is a county maintained to the county line. There are parts of it that are narrow, but would not be considered to be single lane. It does have areas of restricted site distance, and like any narrow, unpaved, mountainous road, all drivers need to be cautious when using it. Public Works Department is not aware of a high accidental rate on this road. Thank you very much for that time.
Thank you for taking the time to look into that. Is there any further comments or questions for staff or for the applicant? Any areas of concern at all?
I have two questions, neither of which are necessarily related to this application. But the first one is, I think we should honor the comment made by the public at the very beginning about, is there any kind of protocol when a, we have an empty chair, not due to illness or anything else, but because there's a lack of a newly appointed commissioner? Is there a protocol with respect to continuing or not? And then my second question is, and it's been on my mind for a long time, there are grows that have been abandoned, and although there is language, stern language, that any terminated grow, you know, the area must be restored, cleaned up, what, how does that, how is that actually enforced, if at all?
Thank you. There is no historic protocol for continuing all items in a district where a planning commissioner is vacant. As you know, vacancies happen for all different types of reasons, and it does take a little bit of time for the supervisor to conduct interviews, find a prospective candidate for the board to consider for reappointment.
Yeah.
Great. And then the second one, our staff is performing annual compliance monitoring site visits. This is on all permitted grows. When we do encounter permatees where they are stepping back, getting out, typically they'll send us an opt-out request or a reduced canopy request because they want to keep their permits open. If not, we do have, actually, we have just placed one on our revocation list for me to, to bring to you as a future consideration of a recommendation for revocation because we were not able to access the site. We have not heard from that permatee, and so that is how we would follow up on the permitted ones. We have also been awarded a grant for, for code enforcement to start doing extra focus on the unpermitted grows. And that includes drone surveillance, as well as stepped up, two additional staff members. And so we're trying to, we're trying to be there to support the permatees who have taken the trouble to be legal and go through this permitting process by focusing in and getting rid of the ones who are blatantly disregarding our codes, and simultaneously also addressing illegal cultivation within the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Turner. In regards to Highland Farms- Thank you, Director Turner. In regards to Highland Farms, I do appreciate staff's report as well as the presentation by Ms. Karsy. As much as, I just take into consideration the size of the project, you know, and then the actual percentage being, you know, less than 5.5% of disturbed land that they actually plan on, you know, utilizing. That was like my only, my only real concern. Do you guys have any, are you feeling strongly one way or the other? Do you guys have, do you have any further discussion on it?
Madam Chair, I appreciate the public input today and the comments that were made. Read by Audubon. Those concerns have been addressed to my satisfaction and I am prepared to move forward today.
With any project that comes up regarding cannabis, it's always tough to see, you know, the community around and what their concerns are. And usually it revolves around water and droughts and obviously the livelihood of people that have been on that, you know, that have lived there, you know, either all their lives or for a really long time. But I feel like a lot of that could be mitigated. I feel like Ms. Karsy and her company is, they're like people, persons. So I feel like any mitigations could be figured out between the neighbors and I'm sure you guys will listen and, you know, try to help them out in whatever way you guys can. So I feel like that has to be done between, you know, between neighbors. I can't, we can't just say, okay, you have to give them, you know, water, you have to do this, although that is, you know, a concern that we have. But seeing, you know, hydraulic reports and the reduction of, you know, of actually what's going to be growing for the property or what's projected to be, you know, worked, those concerns are maybe mitigated a bit. So I just feel like, you know, if there are any open ends, I think you guys can figure that out there on you guys' community up there. So, yeah.
And just to kind of echo Commissioner Chavez, yes, be neighborly. Don't wait until there's an issue to go and open that communication with your neighbor. That would be something that I would definitely encourage. And, you know, we are reminded constantly that these are a case-by-case basis. And unfortunately, when there are bad actors, they're bad actors, but that doesn't mean that there are, that everybody has to follow suit, I guess. I also, I think that this project in the second phase could be really exciting for the area, you know, thinking about future. And you did, I know that there's other surrounding cannabis farms in the area. It's a very nice piece of land. It doesn't, it's very suitable, just like one of the other team members said, if this was a poster child, you know, this would be it. There's no tree removal. It's, you know, it's on a very isolated designated rural area. And, yeah, I do feel, I feel good about it. So. Did you say you were prepared to make a motion, Commissioner Hess? Okay.
I move that the planning commission find that potential impacts associated with this project can be mitigated to less than significant through the implementation of the mitigated negative declaration IS 20-116 submitted by Highland Farms LP Autumn Karsy for the property located at 7508-7522-7634-7746 Highland Springs Road and further described in this motion will not have a significant effect on the environment and that the planning commission adopt initial study IS 20-116 with the findings listed in the staff report dated May 23, 2024.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I further move that the planning commission find that the major use permit UP 20-96 applied for by Highland Farms LP Autumn Karsy for the property located at 7506 Highland Springs Road and further described in this motion does meet the requirements of Section 51.4 and Article 27 of the Lake County Zoning Ordinance and that the major use permit be granted based on the findings and subject to the conditions included in the staff report dated May 23, 2024.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Please note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides 47 calendar day appeal period. If there is a disagreement with the planning commission, an appeal to the board of supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM on or before the seventh calendar day following the planning commission's final determination. Thank you, staff, and thank you to the applicant and to the public. Where are we at? Okay. Hang in there with me. All right. We'll let some shuffling go on and move on to our next item. All right. It looks like we are at our item, hold on.
Sixty.
Sixty, yes. Public hearing in consideration of major use permit UP 21-28 and mitigated negative declaration IS 21-29 for commercial cannabis cultivation, including 29,500 square feet mixed light cannabis canopy with, within 15 greenhouses and type 13 cannabis distributor transport only self-distribution license for cannabis transportation. Applicant is Green Handle Farms LLC Garth Markson, location 3050 Big Valley Road, Kelseyville APNs 008-037-01 and 008-035-14. Now, it has been brought to my attention that the applicant themselves has requested a continuance due to three commissioners only being present. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. They have requested a continuance to June 27th. It would be 9:05 a.m.
Okay. So if we could please formally put or continue this item for date certain of June 27th at 9:05? That's it? Okay.
You could, that would require, it would require a motion, yeah.
Okay.
If, yeah, if your commissioners, because you're not required to continue it, you can certainly hear it today.
Okay.
But if as a collective you do vote to continue it, then that would be a motion.
Okay. So, and I can't move, so you can move.
I move to continue item 6D. To June 27th, 2024, and that'll be at 9:05.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for a continuance. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. We will bring this up at June 27th. Showing a time now of 11:06. We are going to take a brief break until 11:11. All right. Okay. We are back from break. It is 11:11. We will be bringing up our next item timed for 10:10 a.m. Public hearing rescheduled from April 25th and May 9th, 2024. This is a consideration of major use permit UP 20-60 and mitigated negative declaration IS 20-74 for commercial cannabis cultivation, including 43,000 square feet of outdoor cannabis canopy, 42,864 square feet of mixed light canopy within 19 greenhouses, a type 13 cannabis distributor transport only, self, in a self-distribution license for a cannabis, excuse me, try this again. A type 13 cannabis distributor transport only self-distribution license for cannabis transportation. Applicant Ricardo D. Mello. Location is 3681 Benmore Valley Road, Lakeport 007-002-27. And I believe we have Ms. Clay Warren presenting as well today. Here we go.
Thank you, Commissioners. Again, Mary Claybon, Associate Planner with Community Development Department. Today, the agenda is to go over the permit request, the project's scope, site description, project analysis, aspects of interest, cumulative impacts, and recommendations and conditions. The project proposes one A-type 3 medium outdoor license for 43,000 square feet of outdoor commercial cannabis canopy with two A-type 3B mixed light licenses for 42,864 square feet of mixed light canopy within three garden areas on the parcel and a type 13 self-distribution transport only license. The parcel size is approximately 63.03 acres. The site is located approximately 5.6 miles southwest of the Lakeport community growth boundary. The zoning general plan designation is rural lands. The base zoning is also rural lands. This is in the Lakeport planning area within Supervisorial District 4. The site is accessed via deeded access roadway that connects with Benmore Valley Road, a private native soil shared access road. The project is situated in an area characterized by large agriculturally productive lots with setbacks from cultivation areas that are at least 100 feet to the nearest property line and over 1,700 feet from the nearest off-site residents. This does meet the setback requirements stated in Article 27 of the Lake County Zoning Ordinance. On the property, there is one Class 2 water course and three ephemeral channels. These are Class 3 water courses that are located on the property. The setbacks are at least 100 feet from the Class 2 water course and setbacks are 150 feet from the Class 3 water course, which is exceeding the setback requirement. Historical land uses at this site include animal grazing and legacy cannabis operations. The project's scope consists of three cultivation areas defined as sites 1, 2, and 3 on the site plans. The Site 1 is 43,000 square feet of outdoor commercial cannabis canopy in above-ground beds. Site 2 consists of 20,304 square feet of mixed light canopy within 930 by 100 greenhouses. Site 3 is 22,560 square feet of mixed light commercial cannabis canopy within 1030 by 100-foot greenhouses. The applicant proposes portable ADA compliant restrooms, a six-foot tall perimeter fencing around the gardens with a security system, an eight-by-40-foot shipping container for storage, two 10-by-10 storage sheds for fertilizer and waste storage, two standard parking spaces and one ADA compliant parking space, a solar power array, a locking 25-foot wide gate, three loading areas, one near each cultivation garden, and roadway improvements, including hammerhead turnarounds. Existing uses at this site include one permitted groundwater well, three 2,500-gallon water tanks, and interior roadway improvements. The regulations reviewed for compliance include the Lake County General Plan, the Lakeport Area Plan, the Lake County Zoning Ordinance, and California State Regulations. The Lake County General Plan was reviewed, specifically Chapter 3 for land use, Chapter 7, health and safety, Chapter 8, noise, and Chapter 11, water resources. There are several areas within the Lakeport Area Plan that were reviewed. And with that, the applicant does not propose tree removal and is required to adhere to the California State Water Resources Control Board cannabis cultivation policy. This is that policy that requires that the runoff be retained onsite, mitigating any downstream impacts. The applicant has also provided a biological assessment and archeological study that recommend mitigation measures that were incorporated into the draft initial study mitigated negative declaration and the conditions of approval for this project. The Lake County Zoning Ordinance was also analyzed, Article 7, rural lands, Article 27, uses generally permitted, and Article 41, performance standards. The SEQA initial study found that the project could cause potential impacts to the following resources: aesthetics, air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, geology and soils, hydrology and water quality, noise, tribal cultural resources, and wildfire. A mitigated negative declaration is the proposed SEQA environmental determination for this project. All identified impacts can be reduced to less than significant with mitigation. Public comment period occurred from September 29th, 2022 to October 28th, 2022, and the mitigations are outlined in the staff report attachments to draft conditions of approval and attachment for draft initial study mitigated negative declaration. Notification of the project was sent to local tribes on June 12th, 2020. No tribal comments have been received to date. The tribes were notified of this hearing on April 10th, 2024. Aspects of interest: water use. All major and minor use permit applicants are required to submit a hydrological analysis and are required to submit their estimated usage. Within the hydrology report, the water use is estimated at 4.14 acre-feet per year. This site would need approximately 0.78 inches of rainfall annually to infiltrate the recharge area to satisfy the demand. This is approximately 25% of the annual recharge during an average year and 29% of annual recharge during a dry year. Monthly and annual water monitoring is required and reported to CDD within the project performance reports as a part of the annual compliance monitoring requirements for each project, and a drought management plan was also submitted by the applicant. It should be noted that staff receive public comment in regard to water use and the concerns specific to this site, this project, were addressed within the revised hydrological analysis that is a part of the attachments to the staff report. Another aspect of interest is energy use. According to the applicant, on-grid power will be applied for at the time the project is approved. They didn't want to move forward not knowing if their project would be approved in submitting an application to PG&E. So with that, the intention is to submit that application after approval.
Would that involve the use of generators?
Yes. The applicant proposes outdoor cultivation only using ground-mounted solar for the well pump and the security system until the PG&E connection is established. The solar array installation will occur after PG&E installation based on the energy use as determined by the solar provider with the goal of 50% of energy consumption to be provided by solar array. So with that, similar to the last project that was heard today, the outdoor portion of the project would be implemented first until the PG&E connection is established. would be implemented first until the PG&E connection is established. An additional aspect of interest was within the agency comments for the Caltrans right-of-way. Caltrans provided comments during agency review, and there was a concern for an unpaved approach to the highway. An encroachment permit is required, and this requirement has been incorporated into the project's conditions of approval. An additional point of interest here is federal lands crossing. While the project is not located within the federal lands, there is crossing through federal lands. The project property is accessible via Highway 175. Approximately 0.58 miles of Benmore Valley Road extends into federal lands. The applicant, Ricardo DiMello, has entered into an indemnification agreement with the County of Lake for transportation of cannabis through this area. And cumulative impacts. Within a one-mile radius, there are no pending projects and two approved projects. Within a three-mile radius, there are no pending projects and two approved projects. So those same projects. Recommendations. The environmental recommendations are to adopt mitigated negative declaration, initial study IS 20-74, for use permit UP 20-60 with the findings found in the staff report. Major use permit recommendations: approve use permit UP 20-60 with the proposed conditions of approval and with the findings found in the staff report. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you for your presentation. Any questions for staff before we open it up for public comment?
It appears that you've incorporated, this has been continued twice, and that time has been used to further refine and incorporate and expand on responses. And it seems like you've done a more than adequate job of that. Thanks.
Thank you.
It does feel very, very fine-tuned. And it's been on your plate for a minute, probably. So I appreciate all the attention to detail and paying attention to the concerns, addressing those concerns, squashing them. It makes it very smooth that way. So I don't have any comments or concerns as of yet. Commissioner Chavez, do you want to ask anything before I open it up for public? All right. I will open it up for public comment. There's no one in chambers. Do we have anybody in the Zoom room that wishes to speak?
Maria Khan, please state your first and last name, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name's Maria Khan. I have also looked at this project. And my concern is that this is crossing through federal lands. According to federal statutes, it's still illegal to possess or transport cannabis through federal lands. And indeed, a gentleman named Ryan Cooper from Fish and Wildlife or Fish and Game, one of those, wrote a letter stating as such. And so he could not condone or recommend this project. Currently, the county is requiring a signed indemnity agreement as a condition of use for this project and for other ones, acknowledging that the project cannot be accessed without illegally transporting cannabis over federal lands. So I have a question, Madam Chair, if I may ask the Deputy County Counsel. I don't know if I'm able to do that. But I'd like to know if this indemnity agreement to protect the county from legal act, if it protects the county from legal actions brought on by the federal government or the public at large.
I can, I know that Counsel is listening, and she can chime in accordingly.
Is that a question that the Commission has?
Yes. Yes, the Commission would like to know.
So I'm not sure we can rightfully call this an indemnity agreement. It is a recognition that the applicant makes, noting that cannabis is still illegal at the federal level, regardless of what lands they go through. So even if the project abuts BLM land, and there's the only access road is through BLM land, it doesn't matter if the project itself is on county land, monitored land, it's illegal everywhere. Cannabis is not legal in the United States at the federal level, no matter where your project is or who manages those lands. So the federal government could effectively enforce those rules against any cannabis permit holder in the county, anywhere, on any property. Any resource-managing agency at the federal level like BLM or Fish and Wildlife, they have authority in those lands because they are the land manager there. The county does not. So we, I mean, but we can't make a distinction between projects that do go through federally managed lands and those that do not because technically speaking, that rule applies everywhere. So we have no way of making a distinction between a project that is in, say, Kelseyville versus a budding-up of Fish and Wildlife or BLM-managed properties. We have no way of making that distinction. So we have provided, in the cases where there is BLM or other federally managed property over which a project applicant must traverse to do their, to engage in the use that the county approves, we make certain that they recognize that it is still, in fact, a crime at the federal level, no matter what they're doing. So the county itself would not necessarily be held accountable beyond the fact that the county is permitting a use that is currently federally illegal. I don't, the issue here would be if someone were to sue the county because they relied on it, the county's approval of that particular use. But that's a more complex issue that would not come before your commission because it is, it would involve both state approvals and county approvals. So in this case, we're not so much concerned about the county's liability in their use. We're just making sure that people understand that this is still a crime at the federal level. So we can't change that. There is no, and the states can't change that. The states can say that under their regulations that they don't see it as a crime. But anywhere in the state of California, it still is.
That would even apply to the six plants that individuals are allowed to cultivate.
Correct. So it would be any, it's still, and the notice that we ask applicants to sign does tell them what schedule that cannabis is still regulated under. I know there is some federal rule, there's some consideration at the federal level to change which schedule it's regulated under. But right now, our notice that makes a point to highlight the fact that this is still illegal at the federal level, no matter what the county or the state of California have chosen to do.
Okay.
And I hope that answers your question.
It answers, it's, you know, kind of just like a disclosure. You know, you're just saying, hey, letting you know this, that, and the other. And if you want to be aware of it and move forward, then there we go.
And I have also spoken with, for example, in this case, BLM, and their concern was less the legal grows so much as the illegal activity that, illegal grows and illegal activity that may be associated with specific grows. But we have no way of predetermining which applicants will engage in illegal activity and which will not.
Right.
We don't, your commission doesn't permit the illegal activity. BLM has the authority to enforce rules on its own lands. We cannot do that. I have reached out to the local regional office for them, and I have recommended that they contact code enforcement related to joint efforts, perhaps, or to notify the code enforcement if they do, in fact, see any illegal activity that may be associated with a permit. And as the Director has outlined earlier, we do have processes for code enforcement and permit enforcement related to various projects. So if there is illegal activity or there is encroachment onto lands that the county, that the permittee doesn't have any authority to use, then we do have options for that. But we, but your commission cannot take an action based on an assumption that the individual applicant may engage in those activities. So we have nothing, and so unless there's evidence that they are currently engaging in violations, that is something you can consider in your findings. If there is a current violation, then the permit cannot be approved. But anticipating violations is not, is not something that we have as one of our findings. If that helps.
Sure. Thank you, Nicole. Maria, were you, you have already completed your statement.
No, I have not. No, I have not. I'd like to know if the Board of Supervisors has approved the indemnity agreement. Also, I think it's kind of a given that they are going to be violating federal law if they're transporting marijuana across these federal lands. It's not a suspicion or a, you know, a question mark. They will be violating law. And then our county government will be accepting taxpayer taxes from these organizations in knowing full well that they are violating federal law. So I don't feel comfortable about that, but I don't know how you would. But I would like to know if the Board of Supervisors has approved the indemnity agreement. And if yes, then when they did that? And if no, then we'd like to request this hearing be postponed until the Board of Supervisors and the County Counsel have reviewed the agreement and made a determination. So we just don't want to open up our county government to liabilities brought on by other organizations and legislation.
Okay. Does that complete your comment?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other hands in the Zoom room?
Donna, in the Zoom room, please go ahead and state your first and last name, and you'll have three minutes.
Donna Mackwitz, could you please clarify, yes or no, the county will not be held responsible for transport of cannabis across public lands, correct?
One moment.
Consider that first a question from the Commission.
Okay. Well, again, I can't predict the future. I don't know if someone will file a claim of any kind. As far as cannabis is concerned, cannabis at the federal level is illegal everywhere in the United States. So it doesn't matter if it is transported across BLM-managed land or county or state-managed land. It is a crime in both instances. The state of California, and therefore through those actions, the County of Lake have determined that it is not a crime under their rules. So we have permitted the use. So the action, it is an odd circumstance. We don't control the federal government. The language that we provided is not so much, is not an indemnity. The individual applicant is not agreeing to indemnify the county, if I recall. It is them signing a recognition that they understand that they are taking on a use that while the county may approve it and the state of California may approve it, the federal government has not, and it is a crime. So they are risking their investment and their business and potentially, depending on how the federal government prosecutes them, their avoidance of jail, I guess. But that's up to the federal government as how that's enforced. It wouldn't be a civil action. It would be a criminal action against the individual who's breaking the law. So the county in this instance is not because it is not a violation under state law or in the county ordinance. It's not, it's not, you're not going against your, the county ordinances or the state law. So it's, right now, a precarious sort of gray area of the law. The federal government has been choosing not to enforce in certain circumstances, but that's not always the case, and that can always change. And that's essentially what we ask the applicant to recognize in these circumstances is that that is a risk they're taking. And federal managed lands are a greater risk potentially because they are, in fact, regulated in their borders by federal agencies that don't operate under California and county regulations. I'm not sure how I can make that, I'm not sure I can re-
No, I think it's pretty clear.
Okay. So the county, I can't say the county's never at risk. That's not, that's not, but the county does have various, the county carries insurance. The county has various protections under state law. There's a long history of regulations that deal with suing governments. It's a complex issue. I can't promise nobody will ever sue. But in this instance, the, the, the notice that we ask applicants to sign is simply them recognizing that they're taking that risk.
Okay. I think that, you know, that covers a lot of it. Any other hands in the Zoom room, Ruby? Okay. Is there anyone that hasn't spoke?
Maria, you can unmute. You'll have three minutes.
Me again, Maria Khan. I would just like to point out that all of your paperwork, all the county paperwork refers to this as an indemnity, indemnification agreement. So if that's not what it is, then it shouldn't be named that because that's specifically what you're calling it. So I just wanted to make that last comment. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I don't believe there's anybody else in the Zoom room. All right. There's no one else in chambers. I will officially close public comment and bring it back to the Commission for discussion or motion.
I'm prepared to make a motion.
I'm sorry, planning commissioners. Yeah. So I'm looking at the agreement now, and it is, in fact, it does have an indemnification clause. Since that's the case, then the applicant, well, usually, the indemnification is separate and part of any application, or many applications anyway. We do have indemnification language for planning issues generally anyway. So in my brain, it was separated out and not part of this agreement. But in this instance, it has been included here as well. So for this particular project, there should be two forms of indemnification where the applicant has agreed to defend and indemnify the county should an action be brought because of this particular project and the approvals of this project.
Okay. So as it stands, it's correct?
It is an indemnification.
Okay.
So it is, it's an assumption of risk and an indemnification. So, but there is also, for general information, in relation to other projects, especially when they're very, very large, and they, we do have generally some indemnification language that relates to just projects that are risky anyway. So, yeah. So generally, applicants do agree to defend and indemnify the county anyway for land use projects. But in this instance, it's also included in the assumption of risk for cannabis activity.
Okay. Thank you for that.
That being cleared up, I'm prepared to make a motion. I move that the planning commission find that the, that potential impacts associated with the project can be mitigated to less than significant through the implementation of mitigated negative declaration, IS 20-74 for permit use, or for use permit UP 20-60, submitted by Lakeport Farm, Ricardo DiMello, for the property located at 3681 Benmore Valley Road, Lakeport, APN 007-002-27, will not have a significant effect on the environment, and that the planning commission adopt initial study, IS 20-74, with the findings listed in the staff report dated May 23, 2024.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the planning commission find that major use permit UP 20-60 applied for by Lakeport Farm, Ricardo DiMello, for the property located at 3681 Benmore Valley Road, Lakeport, APN 007-002-27, does meet the requirements of Section 51.4 and Article 27 of the Lake County Zoning Ordinance, and that the major use permit be granted based on the findings and subject to the conditions included in the staff report dated May 23, 2024.
Second.
All in, or motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Motion carries. Please note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there's a disagreement with the planning commission, an appeal to the Board of Supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM on or before the seventh calendar day per, hold on, before the seventh calendar day following the planning commission's final determination. Thank you. All right. All right, all right. I believe I had to find my agenda. Okay. Moving on down, we have non-timed items from Director Turner. Hi.
Hello. Our department update, all the things. Yes, if we can move on to the department update?
Yeah.
I just wanted to give the planning commission an update on our Lake County 2050 project. We completed the first round of community workshops at the end of April. Yes, this is May, right?
It feels like it's been a while, huh?
Yeah. And then I got sick and everything was wiped out of my mind. So, but they were robustly attended in person. It was wonderful. We had consistent internet bandwidth issues, and the only place we were able to actually hold a simultaneous Zoom meeting so that people could participate online was when we were in the board chambers. So while we are thankful to all of those municipal advisory councils that hosted us at their, at their meetings for our first meetings, we're going to try something different this time. The purpose of the first workshop was to gain public input and derive the key issues for each planning area, as well as ask them some questions about possible areas of special interest or amendments to the planning area boundaries, as well as amendments to the community growth boundaries and land use designations. So now that the, the board has created these LAIPACs or the Local Area Plan Advisory Committees, a number of the issues that need additional information are going to get handed off to the LAIPACs for meetings at that area. But the second community workshop will, will take place a week after we're going to be able to push out a survey that focuses on each area plan's specific key issues and sort of drills down a little further to, to gain public input. Then the second series of workshops will be housed, I think we're going to combine planning areas this time. A number of the planning areas' public input talked about small adjustments to the planning area boundaries, and so it makes sense to me to, now let's group these so that both planning areas can talk about modifying those boundaries together. But we will also go over the survey of key issues, and since we will have appropriate bandwidth, folks attending remotely in Zoom rooms can be broken into breakout sessions online so they can talk amongst themselves specific to that planning area and then come back, and we can report out as a larger group.
That's neat, because I believe we had a little bit of feedback from, okay, well, what are we going to do while everyone's at the breakout session? But they didn't, they didn't have anything to really do as a collective Zoom group, if you will.
Right. And we had, we had some serious experts handling the tech for our meetings. We had Sam Houston, who, you know, does his wizard work every planning commission and board meeting. We also had Thomas DeWalt from PEG Channel. So the fact that we could not operate Zoom, it was entirely due to the access that we had and not the expertise that we had on hand trying to work their magic. So, so additionally, holding nine separate meetings within two to three weeks was a very, very heavy draw on staff resources. So what we're going to do, that also benefits us with the combination because now we're going to cut it down to four meetings, and they will be held here. And, but we still will be pushing out that survey as far and as wide as we can possibly to make sure that we're gaining public input from, input from people who either aren't able to attend a meeting in the board chambers or can't attend on Zoom for whatever reason. So those meetings will be held the first week of August, and I will continue to update you as they get closer because I do rely and am very thankful for this, this commission's ability to communicate with the people in the public and to help spread the word farther. So.
Yes, and kind of on that note, yesterday, they had the, the leadership forum in Lakeport, and they talked a lot about future plans and the students and, you know, trying to retain good workers and how we can have like a trained workforce, getting involved with the, the youth and getting them excited to actually want to get a certification or a trade and actually come back to their community that they grew up in. And it was just, it was a really neat thing. I feel like there's a lot of moving parts right now in the community and future forward thinking, and it's just kind of neat that it's all happening at the same time. So it's, it's a cool time to be in Lake County right now. And, yeah, I appreciate all your work too, Director Turner.
Thank you.
Anything else?
What is that wedding altar?
For those who can't see in the, in the land there.
They do. The auditor's office regularly holds wedding ceremonies, and it used to just be kind of boring right here, so that kind of makes it-
You wanted to spring it up.
It's lovely. Yeah.
It is. It's just that I've never seen it in the chambers before.
That's nice.
I don't know if they just got it, or maybe they remove it periodically, but I think it's a really nice touch.
On behalf of the Lake County, there we go, zoom in on that. On the, on behalf of your Lake County Planning Commission and Community Development staff, we wish you a happy and safe Memorial Day weekend. Make smart choices, be nice to each other, and dial a ride. Don't call me. Meeting's adjourned. Time is 11:49.